This is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here today for Council Ordinance 20-0527, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2021. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I am joined by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District, Councilwoman Dani McCray from the 2nd District, Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District. We are also joined by Matt Stegman and Semelis on behalf of Mayor Jack Young, as well as Rebecca Simmons and Dominic McIlly on behalf of Council President Brandon Scott. Today, we are going to be hearing from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and their Executive Director, Tisha Edwards, as well as the Family League of Baltimore and their President, Damon Mallard. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tisha to kick things off. And Tisha, if you could keep your presentation in the 15-minute range, that would be appreciated. Thank you. And you're still on mute, ma'am?
Thank you, Councilman Costello, for having the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success present its fiscal year 21 budget and to all of the other council members here in person and over WebEx. I look forward to briefing you on the path forward for the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Karan, can you bring up the presentation, please?
Thank you. Next slide. So, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success is a new agency. We are one years old. And we have really worked hard over this past year to develop a framework for our work that includes significant community engagement, far-reaching partnerships, and partnerships with the council to kind of really frame out how this office should best meet the needs of Baltimore's children and families. Our challenge in this city is that many of our young people, children and youth, grow up at what we call a statistical disadvantage. And what we mean by that is many of the critical indicators for children and youth success, there are just some extraordinary disparities in our community that we all need to collectively rally behind so that we can position children to have a successful future and to meet their full potential. In our office, we consider young people to be the city's greatest opportunity. That if Baltimore is to be the city that we all want it to be, we have to rally around young people. We have to see their promise. We have to see their opportunity. And we have to invest time and energy and resources in their capabilities. And in order to support children, you must also support families. Children are not independent entities. They are part of families. They are part of communities. And so, we have to make sure that we have a holistic and multi-generational approach to supporting children. And the charge of our office ultimately is to radically improve the lives of Baltimore's children and families. And that's a very big goal, but it's something that we take very seriously. And we have, over the past year, been working to try to find the path with the community to meet that charge. And fundamentally, we think our job is to organize and resource city and state agencies and community and nonprofit partners to deliver an ecosystem of support that lifts up youth with a particular focus on boys and young men of color and strengthens families by improving educational attainment and socioeconomic mobility. And so, the thing I would just like to highlight in that mission statement is that the first thing we know is that we cannot do it alone and that we have to galvanize every resource available to us, coordinate those resources. As the mission says, state, city, and our nonprofits and business community, we have to galvanize those resources to really intentionally work to lift up children and families. And so, we've tried to fulfill this mission and to execute our work in a very community-based way. So, as we go into the budget, as I said, we are a new agency. And one of the first things we did to form this agency was there was the former Mayor's Office of Human Services and the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement. We went into those offices and found strategic programming and strategic resources that could be repurposed under the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And so, for fiscal year '21, which is the first year that this agency will have its own dedicated budget, we have a total budget of $21 million, a little north of $21 million. The line share of those dollars are from the federal allocation of $842,896, which is primarily the Head Start program. So, that's what those federal funds are for and supports Head Start programming, which is seats for babies, 3 and 4-years-old, about 3,000 seats in the city. The next largest allocation to our budget is $7,772.71. And those are dollars dedicated from the state to support our CAP centers. And I'll talk more detail about that. The third allocation is the general fund allocation of $4.1 million, which really supports the agency administration. And then, we also receive an allocation of $459,000, about $460,000, from the water utility because in our CAP centers, we are responsible for implementing the city's Water Bill Assistance Program. So, that gives you a sense of what are the resources that we've used to create the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. So, you know, over the past year, we have worked really, really hard, as I said, to have a community-based approach. It seems like a really long time ago, but I want to thank the council for your early engagement with our office, where this time last year, we were all doing these community design sessions. And those were very fruitful engagements because it really helped us to understand where we needed to go as an agency and how to respond to the community. So, we got a lot of community input through those design sessions in partnership with the council. We connected with over 400 residents during that process. We had an online survey where we also received feedback from the community. And we also did dozens of interviews with other community partners and agencies at the city and state level. And so, the strategy for the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success was created through a community engagement process that will take us to where we are today. So, this slide just gives you a sense of kind of the organizational structure that supports the office. As I've said previously, we have three major service areas. Head Start, which is federally funded, the administration, which is funded through general dollars, and the CAP centers, which are funded through the state dollars. And our administration has a focus on policy partnerships, communications engagement, and data and technology throughout those various service areas. So, when we start to talk about the administration, again, the administrative allocation really comes from the general fund and it supports about 13 positions. And within the administration, it also includes funding for African-American male engagement and it supports the funding for our youth services work. And the administration, through those community feedback sessions, we are really focused on what we consider to be the seven priorities of addressing radical change for children. We have them listed here. We want to increase childhood, early childhood development. We want to decrease youth food insecurity, decrease youth homelessness, increase youth literacy. We want to increase trauma-informed care for young people, increase youth diversion practices. And we want to fundamentally break down the historical barriers to success for black boys and young men. And when I look at these priorities today and when I look at the world through the new lens that we are all confronting, it really helps to understand that these are structural challenges and opportunities for young people. And it, I think, makes me proud and hopefully, the administration and the council proud that we have a set of priorities that even though they were created a year ago, they still resonate and are appropriate for our current dynamics in the world today. So, what are going to be our focus areas as we go into fiscal year '21 with the resources that we have been provided? One of the things that we're going to be doing later this month is we're going to launch the Go to Distance Baltimore Virtual Youth Engagement Campaign. We're very excited about this virtual youth engagement campaign. Again, it's one of those things that had a different meaning four months ago than what it does today, but we're excited to play a part in bringing young people together, elevating youth voice, and making sure that even though we're in a pandemic, even though this is a very difficult time for children of color, letting them know that they are a part of a community. And so, this will be a youth-led effort. And it's going to be something that hopefully, we can extend even beyond the summer. But we're very excited about this youth engagement campaign that we'll be launching later this month. We are going to continue on focusing on addressing the challenge associated with young people that's Squeegee. We released a Squeegee Alternative Plan back in September. And we have worked very hard to get young people off the corners, to provide them the support that they need so that they could have more sustainable employment opportunities. Since we launched that plan, we've connected with 79 youth. We have had 39 young people return back to school. 24 have secured employment. And we even have three young men who are going to be graduated from high school or who graduated from high school, graduation was yesterday, who graduated from high school that received support through our African-American Male Engagement Team. And so, we see lots of promise in the Squeegee Alternative Plan. And so, that's going to continue to be a focus for us going into fiscal year '21. We also are going to really ramp up My Brothers Keeper Baltimore. MBK Baltimore has been in the city for several years, but it has never had city government as a backbone. And so, we've made the decision in partnership with the Community Advisory Board that we are going to dedicate a portion of our staff's time to really growing MBK, supporting the national framework, and making sure that we have a strong My Brothers Keeper Alliance in Baltimore City. So, we're very excited about that. We are also going to be planning for our RISE of Passage 2021. This is a program where we want to take young men who are in the closest proximity to harm and bring them into a structured summer program where they are mentored by other African-American men, connected to African principles, and supported through a RISE of Passage program. This will be a new initiative for our office. Our goal is to make it a residential opportunity. We're hoping that we can partner with a college in the city and have young men in a very structured residential experience. But we're very excited about RISE of Passage and we think that it's going to be a real game changer for our work that we're doing with our African-American Male Engagement Team and My Brothers Keeper Baltimore. And finally, we're going to continue to focus on the children's cabinet priorities that I referenced previously. We are working with our partners around the children's cabinet. And our goal is to launch a strategic plan for children and for the public to be able to respond to that plan and then to move that strategy into action. So, our second service area is Baltimore City Head Start. And as I said, Baltimore City Head Start is primarily funded by federal dollars. And we have the Head Start, but we also have five partner operators. So, the data that you see on the performance measures are specifically related to Baltimore City Head Start, the Head Start that we operate. But we also are a pass-through for five other organizations. And that's how we get to 2,800 children having access to Head Start in our city through our partnership with those other local operators. So, in terms of Head Start, it's just important, as I said, to understand that we collaborate with five partners, partner operators. We have 44 centers across the city, which serves 2,800 families. Our partners for Head Start are St. Vincent de Paul, the Y of Central Maryland, Associated Catholic Charities, and the Maryland Family Network. And it's really one of the biggest investments we can make in our 3- and 4-year-olds to make sure that they enter school ready to learn. And so, Head Start is a critical investment for the city in helping to get young babies, small babies, on the path to long-term success. The focus for fiscal year '21 for Head Start is we want to ensure that all of our open slots, that we fill them. We have about 1,000 slots available right now. And it's important that we don't leave any seat where we don't have a child in a family. And the Head Start team has launched an online registration process because of COVID-19. And we understand that many families do not have access to technology. So, we're doing a lot of creative engagements, connecting with our partners just to make sure that we can continue to maintain that high level of enrollment even though we're going through an online registration process. With Head Start, we always have the goal of increasing school readiness. Head Start, one of the great things about Head Start is it comes with a family support strategy. And so, we want to make sure that we are not only making sure that we have a high-quality educational experience for our 3- and 4-year-olds, but we also want to support our families who are part of Head Start and help them to help their children to have success in the future. We want to continue to grow our recruitment, enrollment, and overall improved attendance at our Head Starts. We want to strengthen program leadership and staff capacity across all programs. We want to always make sure that we have high-quality staff supporting the Head Start program. As we said, this is where so many of our babies, it's their first entry point into school. And so, it's important that they have great teachers, great teachers' aides, great program operators so that they can meet success. And our Head Start team is also starting to think about, what does Head Start look like post-COVID-19? We know that we're going to have to make some significant adjustments in our program model to make sure that our babies are safe and that our staff is safe. And so, we're working very hard to think through what Head Start programming should look like as we move into the fall. The next service area is the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership, which is our CAP centers. We have five CAP centers across the city. And as I said, there is a small general fund allocation to CAP centers, which is about $700,000. But the majority of the funding for CAP centers comes through primarily a state allocation. And that is also where the water utility funding is seeded, again, because of the BH2O program. Within our CAP centers, we are going to really focus in fiscal year '21 on our four main priorities: housing and energy assistance, financial empowerment, food security, and case management. These are the national standards for CAP centers. And so, we're going to really make sure as we move into fiscal year '21 that we have a high-quality programming and support for vulnerable families around these particular priority areas. We're very excited about the work that we're doing in our CAP centers. We've been undergoing a transformation. We have a new CAP Center Director, Angela Whitaker, who has joined our team, who's just doing a phenomenal job in leading the transformation of our CAP centers. We are reconstituting our Board of Directors. This summer, we will start a community needs assessment and strategic plan for our CAP centers. And we are also integrating technology to improve efficiency and overall customer experience. This is another place because our CAP centers are high-demand, high-foot traffic for customers. And so, in order to be able to meet that need, we're really going to have to change our model for engagement during the pandemic. And so, we're using technology as an asset to help us modernize and how we work with residents during the pandemic and beyond. So, in terms of our focus areas in 2021 for our CAP centers, we are receiving some additional CARES Act dollars to the CAP centers. And the areas of focus will be addressing food insecurity. So, we're going to expand our programming around food stability for fiscal year '21. And we are also going to be partnering with the Department of Housing and Community Development on the citywide eviction prevention program. So, we will use some of those federal CARES Act dollars to support what we expect to be an extraordinary need related to rental assistance and eviction prevention. We're going to really move aggressively to get more residents enrolled in the BH2O New Water Discount Program. We started that as a pilot last year. We think that there are lots of residents who are eligible for BH2O. And so, we're going to work really hard to increase our enrollment in the water program, the water assistance program. As I said, we're going to be bringing some new technology to our CAP centers so that we can improve the customer experience and make sure that we can maintain our level of service delivery during COVID and beyond. And we're going to really ramp up our one-on-one engagement. We want to become much more personalized and much more strategic around financial counseling. As many of you know, the pandemic has taken a real toll on our community. And so, we need to make sure that the CAP centers and the employees in the CAP centers are well-positioned to support families during this financial crisis. And so, finally, I would like to give the council just a sense of what the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success has been doing to contribute during the pandemic. Our office was one of the lead agencies. We co-lead with planning the implementation of the city's COVID-19 emergency food response strategy. And to date, we've already distributed over 3 million meals in the city of Baltimore. And we partner with over 300 organizations to do this work. We are very proud of the fact that we have engaged young people and provided employment opportunities for them to support the meal distribution effort. I think that's one of the things that we've just done very well. We don't talk about it a lot, but we have almost 30 kids who are working at these meal distribution sites and who are supporting us. And they are considered essential workers during the COVID-19 response. And Head Start, we have done a lot of work to train our staff to adapt to the new technologies that are needed to support distance learning. And as I said previously, we have been converting what was normally an in-person registration process to an online registration, really trying to make sure that we fill all of the seats for Head Start for next year. And at our CAP centers, we are, as I said, the agency that is responsible for implementing the DPW BH2O program and the newly-launched emergency COVID-19 water discount program that was announced by Mayor Young a few weeks ago. And so, that has also been a focus of ours is to make sure that we can provide emergency resources to families that are in need. And as I said, really strengthening our case management model because we know that we're going to have to provide a lot of one-to-one support to help families draft a plan to help them move past all of the challenges and barriers that are going to emerge or have already emerged as a result of the pandemic. So, that is my formal presentation, Councilman Costello. I'm happy to take any questions.
Good afternoon and thank you. I'm the Chairman and Members of the Committee. I'm Damon Mallard, President and CEO of Family League of Baltimore. One, Family League serves as a local management board for the city. Essentially, part of that role is that our work, just like Executive Director Edwards, it covers the cradle-to-career continuum. Just like we have a children's cabinet at the local level, there is a children's cabinet at the state level that's facilitated by the Governor's Office of Children and Youth Division. And basically, they have identified eight key areas in terms of child well-being. And that's basically babies being born healthy, children entering school ready to learn, youth completing school, communities being safe for children, youth and families, healthy children, children being successful in school, and youth having opportunities for employment and career readiness, and families being safe and economically stable. So, we work very closely with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. And I thank Executive Director Edwards for her leadership there. And one of the key areas I think we're looking at right now is the Service Number 385A, which is the work through the pre- and postnatal Okay. So, one of the major initiatives that's part of a citywide, I would say, collective impact strategy is led by the Health Department. All of you probably have heard of Be More for Healthy Babies with the leadership of the Maternal Child Health Division under the leadership of Dr. Doraza. And so, as a part of that work, one of the key factors is ensuring that you have improved birth outcomes. And so, really looking at home visiting is one of the key components that support that work. Thanks to the city's investment that supports basically, or excuse me,[1728.48] Thanks to the city, cities' investment that supports basically four, excuse me, three home visiting service providers. That's Dream, Madam, and Family Services, Family Tree, and Sinai Hospital that actually make face-to-face visits with essentially families and also women who have had previous poor birth outcomes. And so, it's a part of a evidence-based model called Healthy Families America, in which we really work with our partners in assisting them through professional development and training to become certified. It's a very rigorous process. And so, what we've recognized that, you know, what we've seen as a part of that work a yielding, one, reduction in the numbers in terms of infant mortality within the city has been a part of that broader strategy led by the Health Department. With the slides that we will eventually get up for you, we will see in terms of the number of families that have been served. And so, you'll see, basically, in terms of the output numbers for fiscal year 21, we're projecting right now that will be 380 families. And so, if you're looking at kind of the trends for the reductions over the past couple of years, so, in January of 2018, Healthy Families America instituted a set of new standards and really looking at also lowering kind of the caseload that an individual home visitor would be responsible for. And that has been basically a focus in terms of quality, not quantity. And so, that's where we, one, have been working with our partners and making sure that, again, making those adjustments would also be reflected in our targets for the year. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And then also recognizing that with the requirement as it relates to Healthy Families America, that's at least three years that that's a requirement in which each of those home visiting service providers have to track and provide that level of support for their family. So, obviously, we know we're, for this particular population, it's highly mobile. And in certain cases, some of those providers lose contact. And so, you do have that level of attrition in, in that program. Next would be the percentage in terms of young people receiving services that have completed the social-emotional development screening. And this was really kind of fostered over the past couple of years. The screening tool is actually called Ages and Stages, really looking in terms of providing that level of support in terms of social-emotional health for young people, making sure that, one, that they're in the best position possible to enter school ready to learn and making sure that whatever services that are needed, that they are able to, to go on and go. Next. And if there isn't any questions, are we gonna go to the next community schools in OST time? Slide. Thank you. And so, the next is one of the hallmark initiatives that the council has been a longstanding supporter of. I think I've visited a number of schools with each of you over the course of the past couple of years. And so, community schools, obviously, is a strategy in terms of how partnerships are leveraged with community-based organizations, which we call lead agencies, that provide a level of support, not only just to the student, but also to their family members in the community as a whole. Currently, through the support and funding from the city, there are 44 schools that are a part of that strategy. That is a reduction from previous years, largely doing, in fact, to the passage of the 2019 Bridge to Corwin legislation, also known as the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, that provides a grant program that supports community schools and wraparound support services. So, with that, a number of schools that were a part of our portfolio have left the mail currently being administered by Baltimore City Schools. So, what you see in the reduction in terms of the number of youth being served is essentially the school enrollment that was reduced. And for those schools that had transitioned out of our portfolio, came up to be roughly about 2,000 students that were enrolled. And then, next is the percentage in terms of average daily attendance in OST programs. So, one of the key factors is always look at, if you're looking at young people who are participating in high-quality after-school OST programs, the likelihood that they're not gonna have issues in terms of school attendance or chronic absenteeism. What you see in terms of the trending analysis as it relates to the percentages dating back to fiscal year 16, we revised our methodology in terms of how we calculate this number. One, we look at the number of young people who are attending on any given day an after-school program. Then also, we're balancing that out in terms of the number of individuals who are enrolled in that respective school, in that program. So, it's really giving you a true sense and a true picture in terms of the attendance rate as opposed to what we did before, which was looking at the total number of funded seats, which, again, gives you much more, of, of, of a, probably a larger proportion with the percentages that we've seen. So, this allows us to really work in tandem with a lot of those OST programs, finding out what are the best ways that will, one, help draw and attract young people to, to be engaged and having that enrichment opportunity within the OST programs. So, with that being said, I think I've went over my five-minute presentation threshold. So, Mr. Chair, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Damon. We've also been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen from the First District. I said Councilman Burnett from the Eighth District. That's everyone. Tisha, I want to start on your end of things. I would, I would commend you for these performance measures. These are, while still not adequate, are probably the best example of meaningful performance measures in all of the budget book, both Volumes 1 and 2. Again, a lot of these, these output performance measures, like number of energy applications that have been processed, like, that's Tisha's job. Like, there's, the CAP center is supposed to process applications. I get that, you know, it's, but it's kind of a meaning, it's not really a meaningful performance measure. But, you know, looking at things like dollar amount of earning and tax credits, you know, the percentage of three-year-olds that are ready in each school readiness. Head Start, again, that's, I will say, it's a lot more meaningful, but I, I think that BBMR can continue to work on these performance measures to really demonstrate how well agencies are performing. Tisha, the, the first thing that kind of jumps out at me is Service 109 Administration. When you talk about the work you're doing in terms of My Brother's Keeper, all the carryover work from the Office of African Engagement, working with Squeegee Kids. To me, it kind of seems like this is a little bit underfunded. And I know you, you've got your hands full. I think that, and I won't comment on, I think, how not to be political here. If we're gonna make a proactive decision that we're, we're not gonna enforce around Squeegee Kids, and we're gonna take other measures, which is what I'm supportive of, I think best appropriately to do this, this bucket of money, scratch the surface on adequately addressing that issue. My hope is that there's coordination going on with your office and Jason Perkins Cohen's team at MoED. So, my first question is, if you could talk a little bit about that coordination, specifically with respect to Squeegee Kids, how your office is interacting with MoED, what they've got going on? You're, you're on, you're on mute, and please don't call me Councilman Cohen. He's his own person.
Sorry, Councilman Costello. Thank you for asking that question. You're 100% right. One of the first things that we were asked to do when we started our programming in the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, one of the first things that the Mayor and the community asked us to address was the challenges associated with, with young people that Squeegee. And we said, at that time, that there were about 13 corners, active corners in Baltimore, and about 100 young people who were actively engaged in Squeegeeing almost on a daily basis. And Councilman Cohen, Councilman Costello, we were receiving just an inordinate amount of 911 calls from the community because we had reached this kind of very stressful moment between the young people and the community. And there was, there was a very strong call for police enforcement. Since September, we have been providing young people with a lot of support. We do a lot of interventions to try to move them off of corners. We present it to the city, a budget, a one-year budget of about $1 million to ensure that every young person could have access to a mentor, that we could provide them some alternative, short-term employment opportunities while we looked for longer-term employment opportunities. And, you know, I, I would just like to say that our agency has worked not only with the, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, but also with the Family League. And through our partnership with the Family League and the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, we were able to bundle some resources to be able to employ kids. And as an example, Councilman Costello, is the, the 30 young people that we currently have working at emergency food sites, that is money that came from the Family League that was awarded to MoED for Opportunity Youth. And because of COVID, we were having a really hard time moving that grant forward. And Jason Perkins Cohen and Damon agreed that they would redirect those dollars to our office and would allow us to employ those young men who are normally on corners. They go to work 25 hours a week, six days a week, providing emergency food service to our community. So, what we know for sure, Councilman Costello, is that the kids want to work and that they need the money. And we had to be very creative. We didn't have new resources. We had to use existing resources to meet that need. And I'm just very proud of the partnership with Jason. He allowed us to have access to those dollars. Those same young people will be a part of Youth Works this summer. So, they will go from the emergency food program directly to Youth Work. So, we have five more weeks of employment confirmed for them. And during that time period, our job is to move them off of the city's programs and into programs with longer-term employment. So, we are doing that, Councilman Costello. And we have been working across agencies and with the Family League to meet that critical need. Yes, it's relatively new, but on, I don't have a slide number, but in our presentation, we did, it's not in the budget book, Councilman Costello, because this is work that has been emerging. We didn't have a baseline. So, it is not reflected in the budget book, but it will be accounted for going forward. But we now have 39 kids that we've taken off of a corner and we've put back in school. We have 24 kids who are in long-term employment. They're at Amazon, they're at FedEx, they, they're at various employers across the city. We have 30 kids who are involved in our emergency food program, getting paid every day. And as I said, we have three young men who are not scheduled to graduate. And, and I just want to highlight one of my favorite kids, Councilman Costello, is a young man by the name of Kevon. And Kevon was actually involved in a shooting six months ago and really living on the edge. And through our mentorship, Kevon has gone from, we didn't know if he was gonna graduate from high school, till he has graduated from high school. Kevon has gone from a kid who was on the corner in West Baltimore and the corner on President Street, to being a kid who's with us every single day, working at a rec center, passing out food. So, the interventions do work, and we've had some success. And we've had to bundle resources to get to that. But the work is happening, and I'm very grateful for the Family League and for Jason Perkins Cohen. But we have some very, some, some wonderful wins for young people. And we've still got a lot of work to do because we still have kids on corner. So, the work doesn't stop, Councilman Costello. But I, I feel very good about the path we're on. And we're continuing, we're committed to expanding that work going into fiscal year 21.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'd like to touch base maybe toward the end of the summer, after a couple more months. But those are, those are very encouraging data points to hear. The second thing is, I just want to commend you on the food security program that we put into place. I've seen that in motion firsthand, understand the expansive breadth of that program and how difficult that is logistically to run. I think Mayor Young, yourself, our team at Wreckin Parks, at City Schools, et cetera, all of our nonprofit partners, Food Bank, et cetera, have just done an incredible job. I will follow my two-question rule and come back to you in a little bit, Damon. I'm gonna go to Councilman, or Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to start off by saying that oftentimes, when a different administration comes in, they often will take existing programs and just discard them and, and place of their own. And I, I want to commend Mayor Young and, you know, under Ms. Edwards' leadership for taking what a previous administration had and what I believe enhanced it and just made it better. You, you could have easily, he could have easily just said, "I'm gonna do my own thing" and just started from scratch. But I think he took a solid foundation, and now we have this. And so, I just want to say kudos to your leadership and to the Mayor's leadership on that. I do also want to say, I was, I was envious to hear you talk about all of the things that are being proposed for the CAP Center. Unfortunately, if you live in West Baltimore, you'll just have to take the word of somebody else because you don't have a CAP Center. And it is a shame that if we're gonna use those centers to distribute resources and access, that we have not made, have not figured out how to make them available to everyone in the city. And last year, I do this every year, so I feel like a broken record. But last year, I voted against the budget, and this was one of the reasons why. And the Mayor said he heard me. When I look at this budget, it doesn't sound like he heard me. The citizens of West Baltimore still are looking to get a CAP Center, especially if this is where we're gonna distribute the resources. Can you speak to any effort to create a CAP Center for the residents, disinvested, disenfranchised residents of West Baltimore?
Thank you, Councilman Pinkett. I knew you were gonna ask that question, and you are not a broken record, and you have been heard. So, let me tell you what we had been planning, Councilman Pinkett. Prior to COVID-19, the model that we were going to start moving towards is, is pushing CAP centers into DSS offices. We have a partnership with Senator Antonio Hayes. Many of the same folks who come to the CAP Center, they go to the DSS office for one appointment, then they get referred to the CAP Center for another appointment. And so, through our partnership with Senator Hayes, prior to session, we had started visiting the DSS offices and coming up with a strategy to take CAP Center staff and start deploying them into the DSS offices. That means that we would not have to pay for additional facilities costs. That was gonna be a partnership with the state. And all we had to do is redistribute our current staffing model into those DSS centers. That's where we were pre-COVID. Then we had session, and now that we're, the state, and we could not move those conversations forward, until the state had its own reopening strategy. So, everything paused. So, what we are trying to do, Councilman Pinkett, because you are right, we are pushing CAP centers forward. We are advocating that all of the city's resources for vulnerable families are in CAP centers. Well, if we're gonna do that, we gotta have more access to the community. And instead of taking on additional infrastructure costs, we think that we can provide the same services, more access, starting with a footprint with DSS and even looking at some of our nonprofit partners and, again, taking our existing resources and pushing them out. So, I hear you. We, we agree, West Baltimore needs more direct access to the CAP centers. And we are hoping to, to reengage Senator Hayes and some other partners in other communities that have said, "Come to us, deliver this service right here." And that's what some of the technology enhancements that we've talked about, Councilman Pinkett, is so that we could access through VPN all of the DHR resources. We're gonna start qualifying, taking applications for SNAP. So, all of those things, we needed to have a robust technology infrastructure to be able to push those resources into the community. So, you were heard, we're excited. This goes back to your question yesterday about being innovative. I hear you, sir. And so, I'm completely committed to getting us out into the community. We need to do that anyway, Councilman Pinkett, because of this whole social distancing. We can't have hundreds of people going to one location. We gotta spread out and still have equity and access to resources. So, we do have a plan. Senator Hayes is my partner, and helping me to figure this out. Senator Hayes is my partner, helping me to figure this out, and we are going to bring a CAP Center to West Baltimore. You have my word on that.
So you have made my day, and I take back most of what I said, most of it.
I, we agree, we agree. I'm reimagining, sir. I'm doing exactly what you told me to do, is stop coming up with excuses and reimagine. So yes, that's on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Keisha, I just want to echo everything that Leon said. I represent the same, well, bordering area in West Baltimore, so mutual benefit, especially folks on 11th District, Pennsylvania. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. We're going to move on to Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. And I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to look directly into the camera this time, even though he's just right here, and it's really hard for me not to turn. Okay, I'm going to be good. All right. So the first question I have about the number of meals that have been distributed during the COVID-19 pandemic and quarantine, do you have a sense of how the number of meals you are distributing and have distributed compares to the number of meals that the school system normally distributes during an equivalent time period?
Can I get that data? Yes. Can I go on? Yes. Can I get that data? Yes. Do I have it right here? No, I do not. I think there are a couple of distinctions I would make. The school system was primarily serving students, and I think their average daily meal count, Councilman Henry, was about 90,000 meals a day. And as you know, we only had access to about 18 school sites, and so that's why we augmented with the rec centers. I would also say that our meal count is not exclusively children. So our meal count includes seniors, and our meal count includes the meals that we distributed to families and other food insecure individuals through World Central Kitchen. So it's not quite an apples-to-apples comparison, but I'm happy to get you a further breakdown so that you can just get a sense of the, you know, how many meals we've given per target population. But the school system was administering, you know, as I said, somewhere between about 90,000 meals a day.
And I'm sorry, I should have done better framing for that question. That question is not about implying in any way, shape, or form that you guys haven't been doing a great job. It's more about trying to make sure that I can properly educate not only my colleagues but other stakeholders to really grasp the scale of the situation in terms of how much food generally was distributed back during quote-unquote "normal times" compared to what we are having to do right now to basically try to create an entirely new distribution center, I'm sorry, distribution system to provide even more food for even a larger group of people. So I, that's the context in which I hope to use that information. So I'm going to look towards Ms. Semelus and say that we are going to add this to the list of data points that agencies will be returning back to the Budget Committee at their earliest availability. The next question I had is sort of a follow-up on a question. We started talking with the Department of Housing and Community Development about this, but under the acknowledgement that this is really going to be more of an MOCFS managed issue, and that is the rental assistance funding. And Commissioner Braverman was able to tell us that he expects that there will be recommendations given to the mayor within two weeks. But he was, he was less comfortable trying to make a prediction as to what the timeframe would be when we could start to encourage tenants who need help with their rent to proceed to CAP Centers to start to take advantage of this fund. And since we would hope that the council would be a part of the outreach strategy for when that program is available, can you give us even a rough estimate at when we should be looking to get that word out?
So the first thing I want you to know, Councilman Henry, is that, you know, I talked about this yesterday with my hat on, is the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We think that we just tried to wrap our arms around the food insecurity challenge, which you so artfully articulate, that we had to build a new food distribution model. Councilman Henry, we're going to have to rebuild at the same level of magnitude and support for the eviction assistance and eviction prevention and rental assistance. It is going to be an extraordinary need in the city. And our, the CAP Centers are a part of the work group that Michael Braverman is leaving, is leading. I agree with him. I can't give you a specific timeline, but what I can tell you from my perspective is that the courts will be opening soon, and we have to get ahead of the court. So we're watching. One of kind of the triggers, Councilman Henry, without knowing the specific details, is you can't evict anyone right now because there's a moratorium going on, and the courts are closed, so you can't even file for an eviction, right? But when the courts open, there is going to be a huge influx, right? So what, I think that we're all trying to back map from, A, we're trying to gather the resources, which Michael Braverman is the lead on, our cross-agency effort, where we're all contributing, some of our federal allocations from the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. We will all contribute to supporting this effort in the same way that we've done the food strategy. And we know that we have to get the programs up and running prior to the court's opening. And so I think it's imminent, Councilman Henry. I can't give you an exact date, but that's the marker that we're using, that's the time clock we're running against, is when the courts open. And as I said, you know, I can't give you an exact timeframe, but I can tell you that if you wanted to have a watchful eye, that's where I would encourage you to be in terms of knowing how to put pressure and advocacy and making sure that we're ready. It's really around that timeframe when the courts will open again and begin the eviction process. We got to get ahead of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to go to the rest of the committee members. I'm looking to see if anyone has their hand raised on the participants list, and I see...
I do.
I heard a voice, but I didn't have a face associated.
Oh, Mitch Sharon Middleton.
I have Councilwoman Middleton with her hand raised, and I have Councilman Cohen's hand raised, but he's apparently on a phone call, so I'm going to go with Councilwoman Middleton. You still have questions?
Sure, okay, I'll be short. I just want to thank Keisha Edwards and also Demond Mallard. Both agencies have just, you know, you're just so vital and important to the continued equity process, I guess I'd say, with this city. Your agencies are key to, you know, for us moving forward, and your leadership and vision and your goals are just always in place. And having the data to back it, and, you know, a number of agencies aren't up to that type of code, so I want to commend you for that. As far as the CAP Centers, I just want to add, the CAP Centers that have been in place, because it's just so few, they, the buildings inside are, I want to say, almost implorable. So there needs to be some kind of communication with General Services, because I think they're the ones that I want to say contract out to keep those buildings clean. They're not doing a good job at it. And I think part of it is because so many people come through these buildings on a daily basis, that that really need, you really need to look at that piece and see how that can be improved as you're also trying to expand the CAP Centers. And then, and then lastly, again, with your squeegee alternatives, I definitely have seen improvement. I've attended, you know, a number of your functions, and I just think you're on task with, you know, what you're doing with helping those young people. But I guess my question would be, you know, they go back home to parents that were guardians that have problems. Are you addressing that as well? I'd miss that if you are.
So thank you, Councilwoman Middleton. First of all, I was smiling when you talked about the facilities of the CAP Centers, because I can't wait until after COVID so I can take you on a tour. What we have been doing while the CAP Centers have been closed is a facilities refresh.
Okay.
And so one of the things about this transformation with CAP Centers is I think that people should be able to go and receive services with dignity and respect, and that our facilities should reflect our respect for our residents. And so Northwest CAP Center, I mean, the CAP Center at 3939 Bryce's Town Road, it's going to be painted next week, the whole facility, and we're bringing in some beautiful pictures of children so that we can remind people about where we're there, while we're there. So as soon as they finish the CAP Center in your community, I'd love to take you into that building so that you can see some of the things that we're working on. But you're right, those facilities have not been cared for historically, but we are raising the bar, Councilwoman.
All right.
And we're going to treat our residents with respect, and so we got to show up better. And that includes our facility. So I'm very excited about the refresh and the reopening of the CAP Centers. To your point about the young people that squeegee, you are absolutely right. They do come from families that have a lot of challenges, and you can support the child, but ultimately you've also got to support the guardians because they are part of those families, and they need to be a part of the team. And that is why we've tried to give each young person a mentor, and it's the role of that credible mentor to work with the young person to create a personal growth plan. And in that personal growth plan, we identify what are your barriers to success? And for some young people, their barrier to success is the living condition that they're in. So once we go through that process of, and for every young person, it's different, it's individualized, some of them have very supportive parents, right? And the parents needed us, needed some help from us to step in. So every young person's life experience and what got them to that corner is different. And the way that we've tried to address that is by making sure every child has a plan, and whatever the barrier is, if the barrier is where you live, if the barrier is your relationship with your family, if the barrier is you smoking marijuana, whatever the barrier is, it's our job through the credible mentors to help them work through their plan. So that is a part of our process.
Okay, thank you. And Demond, I just want to give you heads up, when we had the hearing for the Baltimore Development Corporation, I kind of threw Family League out there because part of the discussion was about their outreach efforts, you know, with small businesses or nonprofits just kind of working in communities, and how they can, I guess, partner with you to help and get feedback. So I gave that charge to Colin Tarbitt, and I want, I think the two of you should kind of have a conversation about that to kind of build that partnership to help some of these nonprofits that you help fund.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, how they can help and participate in helping, also helping these organizations succeed.
No, it's great, and I'll definitely follow up with Colin, and I'll shoot him a note this evening. And that's one of the key areas I know has been an interest with a lot of our partners, has been capacity building, and really in terms of those trainings that we discussed in, you know, as Keisha mentioned earlier, with trauma-informed care. I know we had Councilman Cohen too, one of our meetings with a number of our community school coordinators with a focus specifically in that area and about being trauma responsive. But then also various things such as planning with your budget, how do you use data to tell your story? These are all the things that we're looking at in terms of a more robust set of services that we're looking at, supporting our partners in expanding.
Thank you, and again, thank you, what you continue to do for, and how you help this city.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, Councilwoman.
I'm done, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So Councilman Cohen, I have, your hand is still up on the list, but I think you've already gone in this round.
No, I haven't gone yet.
You haven't gone? Okay, then you're, then you're next.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. Thank you both, Director Edwards and Director Demond, appreciate the work that you've done. Keisha, really appreciate you stepping in, not just on our Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, but also on the issues around homelessness, knowing that our city was in a crisis, and, you know, you really had to step into that role, and we appreciate you doing that, as well as all the efforts around food access that have already been lifted up. I also appreciate your partnership on the Elijah Cummings Healing City Act. Want to specially shout out Karan from your office, just for being consistent and present and extreme, just an extremely positive force in that work. So we, as a council, and speaking for myself, but I know my colleagues as well, have about 6,000 emails in our inboxes with folks probably around the country, but I'm sure some from Baltimore as well, asking us to defund the police. One of the ways in which we can reduce the need for 911 and for our over-reliance on policing as the tool that we use to solve just about every problem, whether it's a mental health problem, whether it's a youth unemployment problem, whether it's a substance abuse problem, one of the ways that we can reduce reliance on the police department is investing more in our young people, and specifically through trauma-informed care. Again, was proud to partner with you, appreciated Demond being able to show up and talk to the community school coordinators about the work that we've done. And this legislation really places Baltimore at the national forefront of this movement for trauma-informed care. But we're not really funding it, and that's a problem. If we pass bills, we need to make sure we are funding their implementation. And if we want to get to a place where we are not hyper-over-reliant on the police department to solve problems that they are not equipped to solve, like mental health, substance use, trauma, then we need to invest more into alternatives, into our children, into trauma-informed care. And so Director Edwards was hoping that you could talk... And so Director Edwards was hoping that you could talk a little bit about that work, what it would take from your perspective to implement this legislation with fidelity and to make sure that we are proactively addressing the trauma that our children in this city face without bringing the police into every issue that we see. I think you're muted.
Yes, yes. Thank you for asking that question, Councilman Cohen, and raising that point. The first thing I would say is that what is very impressive, based on the work that you and all of the stakeholders, the Healing City folks, and, and all of our partners, is there's a huge readiness, right, for this work in our city. No one, everyone is in agreement that we have to have a very robust strategy for ensuring that we can meet that goal of being a healing city and to have a trauma-informed approach to the work that we do. I don't know that I can tell you a specific number, Councilman Cohen. What I can tell you is that the building blocks are there because I don't think that city government alone can do it. So for instance, the fact that City Schools now has a social worker in every school, that is a, a new asset in the last two years, and we need to leverage that asset, and we need to make it a part of our strategy. The fact that you're bringing together an extraordinary, an impressive task force is a, a set of assets that we need to make sure that when that task force develops their recommendations, that there is funding to implement the recommendation. You've talked a lot about the role that our colleges like Hoppin' and Morgan should play in helping with, making sure that we're evidence-based and have a data-driven approach. We need to have resources to fund that kind of resource, that kind of research so that we can build the model, grow it, learn from it, and expand. So I, I can't give you a number, but I, I do agree with you, Councilman Cohen, that if we are to meet the expectation and the demand of our community, you can't have a strategy that has no dollars. And so what that looks like, because it is, I think, but I also think it needs to be a strategy where you braid resources from lots of different places too, and, and do a lot of leveraging in the process. So I, I agree with the need. I can't say what would it cost to make, to bring that legislation to its full capabilities, but what I will say is there's readiness. I think that we've done all that we can to put the right people around the table. There are resources in city government, and there's resources outside of city government, and if we are going to be a healing city, if we are going to have a citywide response, then I think that we're going to have to have a really robust and integrated funding strategy, and absolutely that should include a contribution from the city, but if we are realistic, I think it's also going to have to include leveraging resources from other places. I don't have a number because we don't have the strategy, but I know that you can't do the work with no resources.
No, and I appreciate that, and would just add that, yes, it is about leverage. Yes, it is about authentic partnership and bringing community to the table, bringing our great academic institutions to the table, bringing those with lived experience to the table, but this is one of those areas where I think we, the city, need to lead and not wait for others to do the work that we're supposed to be doing, given that so much of the trauma that is experienced throughout Baltimore has been caused by racist policies like zero tolerance, like the failed war on drugs, like redlining. And so it is incumbent on us as city leaders to put up or shut up when it comes to trauma-informed care. And I've been really glad to have your partnership, Mayor Young's partnership, all of my colleagues who unanimously supported this work, and the leadership of many of them in helping to get us there, and I think that we need to fund it, and it needs to be funded in this budget.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Looking at the 13th District, are there questions either from Councilwoman Snead or Deputy Councilwoman Snead?
You answer most of my questions. I had the same concern with families coming out of COVID. Well, the, you know, a lot of times it's the young people who will know the struggles right away, and I just wanted to make sure that they'll be able to, you know, have a safe place to live and keeping them in their homes, but it sounds like you guys already have that covered, and I hope they just come through and, and, sorry, that's the three-year-old. And just make sure they are not suffering because of what's going on. So that was my, really my main concern. So thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to assume from the fact that Councilman Cohen has left the screen that his hand is still raised through, out of inertia, but Councilwoman Snead, do you still have a question?
Yes. Can I go back to one other question? Do we know how many of the Squeegee employees overall, of how many we have helped or how many the office has helped overall, and when there are questions and maybe even concerns, is your office the appropriate office to send people to? Okay.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Councilwoman. To date, we have engaged about 79 young people, and some, that has been a focus on getting them back in school, others, the focus has been getting them to work, removing barriers that they might have, whether it's substance abuse, whether it is they don't have ID so they can't get a job. So we have about 70, 79 young people that are actively engaged in our office that we are supporting in various ways. And yes, anyone who has concerns should continue to reach out to, to our team, and we will deploy support immediately.
Okay. Following the lead of our chairman, I'm simply going to go along the grid and check in on council members. Councilwoman McCray, do you have any questions? Hearing nothing, we're going to check in with Councilman Burnett. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Just want to say thank you to both the Family League and Mayor's Office of Family Success for the very innovative and amazing work on a very shoestring budget. A lot of what I wanted to discuss has already been discussed, so fair work.
Thank you, Councilman. Checking in with Vice Chair Pinkett, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Schleifer. Do you have any questions?
No, Councilman Cohen took all the words out of my mouth.
Okay. Well, we can talk to him about paying a fair price for that at a later time. I think that is all the Budget Committee members who are here and available, so if there are no more questions, I think we will recess these budget hearings, and we will be picking up again at 5:30 with the Department of Transportation. So thank you all very much, and we're in recess until 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.